And welcome to the August 8, 2013 Longview City Council meeting. Glad you all are here on this nice, hot afternoon and I think it's the hottest one we've gotten yet and it sure is nice and cool in here, so glad we're inside today. The prayer and pledge will be led by Minister Larry Lee of the West Loop 281 Church of Christ. Would you all please stand?
Shall we pray? Most holy and wonderful God, we just thank you for all of your rich blessings. Thank you for being God that looks down upon us and blesses us with your grace and mercy. At this time, we ask that you be with this gathering and be with our city council and those who are leading, just bless them with wisdom, that Father, that they will lead in a way that pleasing your sight, that will be betterment for our city, our country, and our nation. We ask, Father, to just bless them with wisdom, that those things and that they have agenda on, that they will be led in the way that will be the best for the people and also for your glory. Just thank you, Father, for all your rich blessings, for allowing us to live in a country that has the freedom and those things in which you blessed us with. Again, we ask for your blessing and your mercy upon this gathering. These and other blessings, in Jesus' name, we do pray. Let us all say, "Amen." Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Pastor, anybody ever tell you got a resemblance, a resemblance of Julius Ervin? I thought when I looked over there, Dr. J was in the house. Thank you for coming. He does. He does have a resemblance of... Okay. Yeah. Okay. I've got some, a couple of speaker cards, but they're for the zoning item, so I'm gonna hold those, but I do have a speaker card from Ms. Dora Bennett. Good afternoon, Ms. Bennett.
Good evening. My name is Dora Bennett. I stay at 1104th Street. Y'all, on the right side coming this way, y'all did the job over there. The water still coming on my side. It's just the other side, real nice, this water come up. It ain't like going in the ditch. When it come in the ditch, it go up, then come over. The other part that the driveway, if you come out there, you'll find that when the water come up, it'll suck to semi port. I said about there low. My port is sinking. The water still come up, not over. If they had got this side, the water would've came right, you know, on my side, but it don't. They fish the other side. This side, what, when I get out, out the house, when it raining, in June, when it rain, I'm looking at the water coming over. The water went over this side, on this side.
Okay. Ms. Bennett, you've been here before to talk about that problem, haven't you?
Yeah, but the water, yes, sir, but the water do not go up.
Water normally doesn't go up, it go down.
But on this side, that's the side they fix. The side I'm talking about, when I, when it rain, it's water. I have to get away, water like bottom to wreck, even us go to check something like that when it raining.
Okay. I'm gonna ask Keith Bonds, I saw you, would you mind? I know there was work that we did on that, if Ms. Bennett's been here before, so we're gonna ask Mr. Bonds to look into that for you, okay?
Okay, but I did talk to him about if he spray the stuff to keep the rocks, this thing, for looking down. He said he just cleaned the dish out after spray. He said he might be suing. I said, "Suing for what? I just want the water start coming on that place when I have to get out."
Okay, we need to get over there and look at it, so let us do that for you, okay?
Okay, all of y'all can come.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Okay. Consider agenda, is there any item on considered agenda council would like to pull separately?
Item B.
Ms. Cash has said item B she'd like to pull, to discuss. Anybody, any other item? If not, may have a motion on the other items.
Move to approve.
Have a motion? Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Item B is the resolution of wanting a contract to Southside Bank. Ms. Cash, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted some additional clarification. I had a couple of questions about that regarding the process, how that takes place, and kind of how we select, because we're completely switching banks for the entire city, correct? Could you elaborate a little bit on the process for us, please?
Sure. This year, we actually used a consulting firm, so I'm gonna have Bill Cook come up and talk to you about that, okay?
And who is Bill Cook?
He is with Valley View. He is the consulting firm.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Bill Cook. I'm with Valley View Consulting. We are the city's investment advisory firm, and as part of our scope of services to the city, we assist the city with the bank solicitation process. It's a requirement that's governed by Chapter 105 of the Local Government Code, spells out pretty specifically the requirements for the solicitation, and a couple of them being it requires advertisement, requires notification of all the banks within the municipal boundaries, requires a contract be entered into that's for a term no greater than five years. And so, working with the city staff, we developed a calendar so that we could get through this process in time to have a new contract in place for the October 1, 2013 deadline, when your current contract rolls off. We did a review of all the banking services that the city utilizes, the volumes and the activities, and then made a determination of some services that could be helpful to the city, that'd be cost effective for them, and then drafted a request for application to be distributed to all of the banks that we could contact within the municipal boundaries. We sent that to them, and as a result of that process, we had a pre-application conference, which was attended by some of the local banks, went over the request for application, and answered their questions, and then by the deadline, we had received three very competitive applications. The incumbent Capital One had done a good job for the current contract and the previous contract, but the application from Southside Bank was a better in terms of the best value criteria that were established at the onset of the process. And so, with the transition being considered, it was important for staff to feel comfortable that the service that would be provided by Southside Bank would meet their expectations and requirements. And so, they did a thorough reference check of four references, and then also had the bank come in and give a demonstration and presentation of their online system and capabilities. And there, they found that the proposed system was a more robust and beneficial system than the one they'd been using with Capital One. So, in the bottom line, we ended up having an application that was economically the most feasible for the benefit of the city and had a ability to provide all the services, and the online banking services for the city would be an improvement. And so, on the strength of that, that was the reason that it came to be that the Southside Bank was the recommendation for your approval.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir, for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for explaining the process. Okay, if there's no other question, may I have a vote on that item?
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
One second.
Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We have budget items. Mr. Willard discussed the proposed fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. I was gonna ask if you're gonna do that up there. I guess you're gonna do that up there.
Oh, okay.
No. Thank you all for being here. Good job, guys.
Okay, Sean. Before we kind of throw it open to try to answer any questions that you might have to begin this budget work session from the last meeting, I wanted to do just a little bit of clarification, if I could, regarding the compensation study and the market adjustment plan that we presented to you at the last meeting. Subsequent to the last meeting, there were confusing, a little confusion, and the newspaper article that came out the next day, I think, and I won't quote it directly, but essentially that all employees were going, assumed all employees were going to get, if this was approved, an across-the-board pay increase, and that is not the case, and I wanted to clarify that a little bit tonight, and the Longview News and Journal did issue a clarification on that fact. In fact, I think last week, one of the bullet points in your presentation outlined that very fact, but I wanted to take just a few minutes and go over the compensation study and to remind council what we started in 2009, and kind of, and not to get in the detail, because we have volumes of detail and things like that, but I wanted to give you an overview of exactly what went into this compensation plan and what it is and what it is not. In 2009, we contracted, council contracted with Public Sector Personnel Consulting Company, and they did a comprehensive study based on a market compensation plan. I think council at that time decided that this would be the way to go to appropriately compensate our employees for the city of Longview and have a more market-based approach to compensation. We implemented part of that that year in 2009, and it was quite costly, but we implemented part of it. We could not implement the next year because the economy, as you remember, went down, and we just could not do that. Since then, council's granted a couple of across-the-board pay raises, one being last April, that went into effect, that helped the thing along, but it was really not based on any market survey particularly. So, in 2012, we asked public sector people to update, to do the survey, and see where we are in the marketplace, and in that process, we took 110 different job categories that we have in the city of Longview. Not every job category, but your main job categories in all the divisions, and we went out and looked at 19 different cities in the state of Texas, all across in our market, other markets, all around the city. We also used, or I say "we," the consulting firm used the regional and private sector data as well in their calculations. And the outcome was that in the current pay ranges, pay ranges for 39 of these benchmarked positions, it shows that we're 5% or more below the prevailing market rates in those job ranges. An additional 62 positions were within 5% of the market rate. So, the average variance of all these benchmarked positions, we were 4% really behind the market in these, in these pay ranges. Compared in 2008, we were 13% behind, so the, what this tells you is that the across-the-board pay raises you granted in April and I think the year before that helped move us back up into the market, and then what we did in 2008, but at this particular time, the survey showed that we're still 4% behind the market in these job categories. And let me kind of, this is, I think, a good slide to kind of explain where we're trying, what the market-based approach to paying employees is. You'll see, let's look first of all at the blue range, the blue line, it's range 38. All of our jobs are numbered numerically by ranges, and so, in this particular range, this is for a senior equipment operator, and in our pay scale, that would be a range 38, and so, you start at, what, a little more, between $29,000, around $30,000, and that's where an entry-level employee today would come in at as an equipment operator. And then, over the years, you would progress up and along that continuum, and you top out at the top of the range 38, and that would be a function, if you're here for a long time as an equipment operator, you don't promote, but you just stay in that particular job, and the city moves with the market or pay increases, you'll continue up that continuum until finally, you top out at that pay range. So, when we looked out and saw that currently, that pay range according to market for a senior operator needs to move to the market, so, and under this plan, it would move to what we'd call a range 40. So, the range 40 is the result of that 19-city survey for an equipment operator job, and so, the market says that the new pay range would need to move. So, let's say this employee was currently on the blue continuum, getting $34,131 a year in that pay scale. To move that employee or that job to the market would have to, he'd have to, or she would have to go to a range 40, which would be $35,859. So, the ranges move to what the market. Now, this does not take into consideration an individual. This is strictly looking at the job category and the job. It's not a merit. We don't go in there. Now, we have evaluation processes that we do every year, but this is just looking at a market range for that job based on 19 other cities, and we've, the theory behind it is we want, would like for our employees to be paid at market range, not the highest, not the lowest, but whatever the market is out there, that's what we're trying to get them to. So, in this particular case, the plan would move that. Now, there are some jobs that we have that will not move ranges because the market says that there's no need to move it up. They're at the market in that particular range, okay? For instance, here's just some different categories. Our health inspectors, when we go that range, we're, they're 7.5% behind the market in that category. The library group, they're 5% to 10% behind. Solid waste, 5% behind. The municipal court category, 5% behind. Police operations, they're 5% to 10% behind in that range. So... Is that the last slide? So, what we have is that not everybody is going to get a pay raise. If they're, that range doesn't move based on the market study, and you're in that range, that's, you're at market. Now, if the pay, if the study says that the range needs to move up based on the market, then you would move at the same position you are on that continuum to the next range that they recommend. So, it's based on the market study, not everybody, a lot of our employees in the job category they're in are in the proper range, and they're at market or above.
Ms. Willard, question. I think what I heard you say was based on evaluation. In other words, if an employee didn't get a very favorable evaluation, you're not gonna automatically move him up to that range.
Well, it depends on the evaluation. I mean, if they have to pass an initial, a basic evaluation, and if they pass that, then it, if they have an unfavorable evaluation in that process, then that, they wouldn't be eligible for that, but this just...
I just want to make, I've heard that question asked, to make sure that that...
Well, let me back up. That's really more on a, on an across-the-board pay raise. I probably didn't say that correctly. Somebody, is that right? Okay, let me correct that. On a, like we've been doing the last couple of years, we had a last year of 3% across the board. When we did that, everybody that passed their initial evaluation got a 3% across the board. This does not look at the individual employee, it looks at the job category. So, if that job category, if that pay range, all the employees on that pay range will move to that next pay range, so it does not contemplate, you know, the individual employee.
Okay. I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I think we really should look at, I mean, as part of that, again, if you've got an unfavorable performance evaluation, and we're moving people up in range even though they've, they're not performing favorably...
One problem we have is that our evaluations are done on employee hire date, and so, that's all throughout the year. We're doing employee evaluations now, you know, so we have to work on the timing of all that, but...
Yep. Questions?
This is designed to move the range.
Hold on a second. Mr. Frost, and then I'll come back over to Cash.
Is this, this process you're doing, the way I understand it, you're bringing people to market now, who are below market, regardless of their fact. So, with their next job, and it's blow up here, they need to be up here to be competitive.
Yes. Right. It's, that's right. Let's move back to those two grabs.
Excuse me just one second. Before you go anywhere, I have another question, so let's hold off on the slides over there.
That was kind of similar to what I was going to ask, because if we're moving people up to market, because I don't, I wasn't on the council in 2009, and I don't necessarily agree with that particular step, and I say that because if we're moving people up to market, what's the incentive to have a merit increase if we're automatically going to do that and we're gonna continue this process? So, I agree with the mayor as well. I'm a little concerned, and I'd also like to ask, of those 19 cities that we were compared to, did, was the, did we look at the cost of living comparisons? Because our cost of living is great here, and some of those other cities of comparable sizes, perhaps their cost of livings may be a little bit higher. I'm just curious to know those other variables that kind of were taken into account during that process.
That was taken into account. Ms. Haico's not here tonight. She's out, so I'm a little behind the curve a little bit on that.
That's okay. And I have another question. The example of the senior equipment operator, is that a high, is that an hourly or is that a salaried position?
A salaried position.
And the reason that I'm asking, it's, I thought that it was hourly.
I would think that's...
I thought it was hourly, and the reason that I'm asking is because I have reviewed, I've been asking for a lot of information, and I reviewed it all, and I'm seeing some patterns, because, you know, when we look at our hourly people, I really believe we have a responsibility to, if they're doing a good job, to fairly reward them. I don't necessarily believe that we always have to move with the market, per se. So, that's my general concern. I do think merit and performance play a huge role, and I also think that using the market to select which employees may be eligible to, or need to move up, I think that's somewhat subjective.
We have to have some benchmark, whether it's the market or just your preference or whatever, it has to really be, I mean, you just can't go willy-nilly out there.
Right, absolutely. And that's not at all what I'm saying, but what I am suggesting is that perhaps we need to reevaluate the system so that we are taking into consideration employee performance, because I would like to see us go back to some form of merit-based increase. I believe that's how you retain people, because there are some salaried people that are in line for these market increases, there are some hourly people, and I've taken a good look at it and reviewed it again, and I'm a little concerned about that, because I think that we also have some positions that are well above market, and there are some substantial gaps.
If you don't base it on market, what would you base your benchmark on as a primary reference?
As I told you a couple of days ago, I don't know. That's why we have staff, and so, I'm looking for suggestions. Instead of saying we have to do it this way, I'm just, I'm looking for fairness across the board, because I believe that people are, should be rewarded if they do a good job, so that's just kind of where I'm at.
I mean, I understand, I understand that there's, there's a benchmark, and just like in our businesses, I mean, we know, we know pretty much where the, the market is, highs, lows, and indifference, and, you know, when you're, when you're making a decision, you know, in a hire and in a performance evaluation, you're looking at a number of factors, including how well does that person perform, and, and when you're bringing somebody new on, it's, you do look at, you know, the cost of living and all these other things...
Absolutely.
...you know, compared to where maybe some of your other competitive markets might would be, so, okay.
Mayor, I want to add something else. You brought up a valid point, because we have some very tenured...
But one thing, one thing I want to make clear is we gotta have a start point somewhere, and, and the reason we did that study back in '09, because we went year after year after year, and it was one of those, you throw up against the wall and you see if it stuck. We didn't really have, you know, a systematic or strategic approach to how we do that, and when we're gonna, you know, when we're gonna recruit and retain, we do have to have some, but I do agree with you in that there's, you know, additional things that gotta be weighed in on this, to really make this a good, fair, comprehensive way of doing things. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And the only thing I want to add, and I agree with that, that's exactly what I'm saying, is that what I've found is that we have employees that are being told they're at the maximum pay in a defined category according to the benchmark, and some of these employees have been with the city for a great number of years, and whether they promoted or not, should we just say, "Well, we can't even do a merit increase"? Not, not saying that we didn't do it last year.
We do that. We do that. We did that last year.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But to compensate for what happened in 2010, just, just an example, you know?
Well, so, a personal, this is a perfect example of what it shows. If a person's here long enough, and you get raises along and all that, it's gonna end up at the top of that continuum. That's the outside range, so, you know, when you get it across the board, it'll extend that out, and those, but there's no more progression unless you promote to another job or the range moves.
The only thing that you and I discuss is, David, I mean, the only thing you get to is, you know, we have, we have people that are maybe, I'm gonna use the word gross, but people that are maybe considerably undercompensated, and we have some number of people that are considerably overcompensated for whatever reasons.
Yeah, and that's the difference.
I know, but I'm, but, I mean, it's kind of like, you know, if we, if we froze because there's so, so much overpaid and got away from that across-the-board raise situation, which means irregardless you get a raise, but if you got, got away with that or from that, maybe you could have the funding to catch up with the people that are really lagging considerably, and even with this particular study, we may not be able to catch them up, you know, to a, a good mid-range, okay?
And what we'd need to determine is where do you want to freeze it? Do you want to not pay people above the midpoint and for a while, and just pay those that are below the, you know, the first two or three rungs there? I mean, it, you know, you get into, if you're gonna, if you've got people that are overpaid, right? If that's what we're saying, then we need to have a cutoff and...
Absolutely.
Decide where you want, who you want to pay and who you don't want to pay.
Well, it's not about deciding who we want to pay and who we don't want to pay, but it is, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Well, what job category you want to pay and not?
Exactly. And what is the maximum pay, and what is, you know, based on tenure, you know, again, it goes back to staff, that's why we have, you know, and consultants, rather.
One of the things I'd recommend is, is, okay, so, the term overpaid, okay? Are they 10% above market, 20% above market, 50% above market? I think you'd almost have to look at...
Well, there again, what's our benchmark? We've got it tied, this is a market plan.
Well, your benchmark, you're saying is the 2009 compensation study.
This is the benchmark, and the bench...
And it was renewed in 2012, so that's, sorry, your benchmark there is, is, you know, as far as what they're saying in those specific jobs should be the...
For instance, the benchmark right now for this equipment operator is gonna make $34,000. Now, is he overpaid? Not according to the market. Now, if he's overpaid, because we don't want to...
But let's say, because of tenure, because of across-the-board, everything, that person's sitting up at $43,000.
Mm-hmm.
Now what?
He's within the market, right? Well, he'll go, he would go to wherever that, if he's at 43, he'd move to the red line at the same position, so whatever, I just use that as an example, you know, for somebody midway through, somebody that's been here, I don't know, eight or 10 years and moved up the line there. If you go to market, that person in that job would move to the $35,000. That would be the next range according, and then that person would be paid according to the market.
And, you know, this is kind of...
Now, if they're up, anywhere along that continuum, they're behind the market.
Yeah, this is a little bit unfair, because the oil field wreaks havoc on people like this equipment operator. So, that 43 is probably not a great salary compared to what they pay. And again, that needs to be...
But in the oil field, these people get $35,859. Isn't that right?
Well, probably more than that, because most of our, most of our data is municipal data and with a little bit in there.
I've got Gary in, I'm coming, Mr. Gary.
What's your answer, Mr. Buck? When I get to the top of my pay range, say for example, an equipment operator?
Okay.
Do I get any more merit increases after that? Or do I get...
Depends on, if we do an across-the-board pay raise, like we've done the last two or three years, then if you're at the very top, you would get a, instead of going up, we'd either have to move the range up to accommodate that, or to, we've been typically paying someone a one-time payment, the same amount, say it's a 3%, they would get a one-time 3% that doesn't go into the base, okay? So, that keeps it on the, unless the range moves, that's the only way we can come, once they get up to the very top.
And that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I mean, if I'm already at $43,000 with that 3%, I'm gonna go above that.
Yeah, you, yeah, if you're granted a 3% raise, you would get the 3% even if you're maxed out there. You just get it in a one-time lump sum.
One-time lump, okay, that's right.
And that keeps it.
And that's the concern. We have some employees that have been... And that's a concern, we have some employees that have been-
Excuse me just one, excuse me one second, excuse me one second, I got, I got somebody over here, and then I'll come back to you. Hold on a second, okay.
Okay.
Keep, keep everybody in the, quit.
All right, on either of your scale, your blue or your red, you're starting at, say, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and then you're moving up gradually, what moves that individual up, from that, they'll call them squares, triangles, circles, or whatever, there's about twelve of them on there, I think.
An across-the-board pay range, or a market adjustment, either one, any, anytime you'd get a pay increase of any kind, it would move the employee up that scale at some point.
Uh, I was hoping you wouldn't say that.
Well, I mean, if it'd be any, an increase, if you're getting thirty-four thousand dollars, and you grant a three percent increase, that gives them more money.
No, 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 where does merit pay adjustment come in there? In other words, what I'm hearing you say is, that guy moves up if he's doing a good job, bad job, or whatever.
Hold, hold on one second.
We don't have a true merit system here in the city.
Hold on one second, um, Mary, let, let me just, earlier, Mr. Willard said that, um, an across-the-board merit raise means that that employee, to get the three percent, would have had to have been in good standing-
We have an evaluation.
-on their, on their performance evaluation, in that situation, because I remember that-
Yeah.
Well, that's right, in other words, he's doing, he's doing his job, but he's not doing a superb job, or he's not doing a better job than the other guy is, in other words, as long as you're, as long as you're medium, as long as you're not upsetting the apple cart, you keep moving up, but you don't really do, you're not, what, what are you do, what are you doing to keep it moving up?
Well, that gets back to more of a management problem, you know, you gotta, you need to be supervising the employees, and-
There are people, there, there are people out there, that at the thirty-five thousand range, or the forty thousand dollar range, that, uh, five years from now, are not gonna be doing any more work than they're doing right now, so I, I have a, a, a cost of living raise, yes, I can understand that, but when you just start giving raises, depending on how long you've been here, you get more money every year, well, I'm just gonna sit back and do the same thing I did last year, next year, and the year after, because I know every year I'm getting more money, and I'm not doing any more performance than I did the year before. Thank you.
Okay, all right, okay, Ms. Cash.
I know we have to have a benchmark, this is the last thing I'm gonna say, but I would like to, to ask, I, I don't know that we're necessarily tied and committed to this, so perhaps we can look at, within, maybe for the next fiscal year, I, I, you know, I can't speak on behalf of the council, only the mayor can do that, but I'd like to see some, some, some alternatives, and if we truly have a consulting firm that's doing this, I, I would like to see what the firm, what suggestions they offer, I'm, I'm not really interested in a lot of staff input, I'd like to see what an outside firm would suggest we do, or, or if there are any suggestions that they have.
To try, to try to maybe round it out a little bit more-
Absolutely.
-with, taking into consideration merit in-
And I say that, because when we, when we begin to use our own employees, the process becomes diluted, and so I believe that we should, maybe, except for the city manager, of course, but I, I would like to see that in the future, please.
Um, one, one, let me, let me mention one other thing, I, I was thinking about, when Sidney was talking, in, in, that example of the, of the across-the-board raise that we did year before last, some, I think it was two percent, maybe?
Three.
Two, well, we did three last year, but, but-
Two percent, I think, before the-
Yeah, but I mean, the, the, based on that study in 2012, or 2009, we were thirteen percent behind market, so we were double-digit behind, so, but, but as we close that gap now, now the merit discussion, and, and those other things become even more significant-
Right.
-because you're, you're trying to get the people that are really doing a good job-
Absolutely.
-that are, man, they're, they're, they're really doing an outstanding job, I mean, you want to, I, I, I'd rather see them between midpoint and maximum, not, you know, get, 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 get the money to the people that do the-
What about people that are overpaid, and, and how are we gonna determine who's overpaid? Do they get a deduction?
Well, you know, you know what I'd like to see, David, what I'd really like to see on that, and, and I think you and I discussed this just briefly, and not to put any of those employees on the spot, but I, I'd really like to see, I mean, we saw through the newspaper how many, the number of people that were either below range, or something, t- tell us how many positions, or what the positions are of the people that are overcompensated at this point, and it's not their fault, I mean, they've been here for a long time, maybe, or-
Well, that's my, we don't, I don't know what overcompensated means.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, if you, if, using your benchmark-
Okay, above the fifty percent mark?
Yeah, I mean, there's some amount of people, we keep talking about, that are termed overcompensated, based, uh, uh, as compared to the study, and I, I would just, you know, like to know, what, what are those positions, and, and how, how are they overpaid?
The other way you look at that, you've got thirty-five, eight, fifty-nine, if you've got a fellow that's been here five or six years, and he's making thirty-five, eight, fifty-nine, and he's running a backhoe, and you've got another fellow that's making forty-one thousand, that's running a backhoe, and been here ten years, and he's really not performing as good as the guy that's making thirty-five, that's overpaid, pure and simple. You have to look at performance, there has to be some kind, and, and I apologize for you having to be up here, not when Ms. Heiko's not here, you have to have some kind of form for merit pay, you just can't keep everybody on a graduated scale going up, when they, when they, when they don't do any more than they did five years ago.
Well, Sidney, what, what he was talking about, but we, we've got to manage those people, we, we, we have to have-
Well, we've got to have a merit pay.
Well, I understand, and that's what we've discussed, and, and that's, that's, that's what we're talking about, but, also, that supervisor, that manager, that director, has to do their job, looking at the person underperforming, the person overperforming.
That's exactly right, they have to, they have to report that, and they have to write that up.
That's right, as part of that, as part of-
I think the manager should have the primary responsibility of deciding who gets the merit raise, or who gets the raise, and who does not, that should be the department head.
Well, we've done that, I mean, that's, and that has been the case in the past, because they had to be in good standing, you know?
Well, good standing just means you're doing your job, but are you doing it better than the other guy?
No, no, no.
Are you doing more production, or you, are you taking, if, what you're writing with the people that you, that you work with at Citizens, you know, there, there's always numbers to write, uh, everything, if, but you just have to sit down and decide how you're gonna do it.
Okay, all right, Richard?
I think we're making some assumptions up from Mr. Willard, and I apologize for that, um, I, I make the assumption that you and your staff know what you're doing, and I also assume that if you have someone that's not performing well, they're not gonna get an automatic pay raise, is that a reasonable assumption? Yes, sir. Yeah, so you're actually managing it from your-
Well, we're trying, now, I'm not, I can't stand up here and tell you that all eight-hundred-and-fifty employees that we have are doing a good job.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying the philosophy that you put in place-
The philosophy is, if they have to pass a simple, right now, now, it's not a true merit in the form of trying to gauge what Mr. Allen's trying to do, we have a-
That's not what I'm speaking to, I'm talking about management, as you said earlier.
All right, what's your question, then?
I'm assuming that you have counseled your execs, they report to you, and they have counseled the supervisors, they report to them, that there's a process to manage people, like Mr. Allen's example.
Yes.
If you have two people with the same amount of tenure, they don't necessarily get the same pay, if they're not doing the same job, because they've been counseled.
That's what we expect them to do.
And perhaps their pay would have been, not necessarily, uh, increased the same way another person with the same tenure would be.
Depends on what those evaluations they've done.
Right, so you're managing that situation.
We're trying to do that.
That's the first question, second question.
Okay, excuse me, Richard, can I, can I just, on, on that point?
Yeah.
Okay, but, but what, what they're saying is, is if that person, on this particular program right here, if that person, you know, has, you know, I, I mean, if that person's been evaluated, not doing quite as good a job as this person, but in this, in this particular case, they're still gonna be moved up if they're behind the range, okay, I just want to make sure that-
The, the, I guess the flaw, if there is one, in the, way we're doing it now, is that if it, if they pass a simple evaluation, a basic evaluation, they get moved up, it doesn't take into account if this guy, if they both pass it, but this guy's doing a little bit better, they're both gonna get the same raise.
Right, okay.
And that's just part, that's the part of the way you-
Again.
Oh, oh, I have a-
Go ahead, go ahead.
That's the part, that's the part of when you deal with a system like this, I get that.
Yeah, now, we can-
Second question, well, why, why are you bringing this to the council? What was the impetus for you want to bring this as part of your budget?
Well, we had questions from council, and I was trying to answer some of those questions in the newspaper article.
No, I mean, the, the market, bringing to this, this increase, this change in ranges, was it your idea, was it from council, was it employees?
Well, it came from, from Ms. Heiko's group and personnel, that we started this, we haven't been able to get back to it since 2009, and so we wanted to try to get everybody at least to market.
Okay, I'll make an assumption, now, I assume then we were having feedback from either people that were employed here, or people perhaps who were trying to employ, that didn't come to work for us, because our range perhaps wasn't as high as other cities? Was that the reason why Ms. Heiko was bringing it to you in '09?
Yes.
Is that thirteen percent difference?
Yeah, we were fourteen percent behind, and we had been doing things, we wanted to do a pay study to see when we, how we were stacked up between, in the market, so.
Okay.
Uh, so, that was the impetus behind it.
Last question, so, you've, you've been able to accomplish this within the budget you presented to us, and the dollars you presented, so it's no additional cost over and above?
No, this was in the budget that we presented.
It's within the budget, and the cost of this estimate, estimated is to be?
Eight hundred and seventy-five thousand.
What, Mayor?
Eight hundred and seventy-five.
Eight hundred, almost nine hundred grand, but you're still, you're still able to do all of that, just make sure I'm clear on this, and basically bring your budget in, pretty darn close to what last year's budget was, am I right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
Okay, sit, go ahead.
Okay, first off, David, I want to apologize again, I realize, I realize Ms. Heiko is here, I guess what I'm trying to get to, or trying to get around to, or, that's not very good English, but, we're gonna be hiring a new personnel manager, or, and, and certainly, I would just, my intentions of this discussion is, if that person would put in some type of merit pay raise, or merit, what is merit, what, you know, just to take, just to-
Merit increase.
Performance, merit, some type of merit system, to where, once a year, we don't say, well, if you didn't mess up, you're gonna get another raise, you know, if, I, it's just, there are people out there that do better jobs, and there are people out there that do less, and that's just human nature, and I think we need to reward that person that does a better job, and I would, my hope would be that we put, that we put some kind of system in place that would do that.
Okay, okay, any other questions? Okay, um, what else do we have, Mr. Willard, did you have anything else? Any other questions?
Whatever the council had.
Council's had the opportunity to review the, um, budget items, and is there any other item we want to discuss at this time? Okay, Mr. Willard, thank you very much. So we have a second item, and that is the new simplified, simplified-
Simplified.
-collection and recycling proposal, we have Dwayne Archer tonight.
Thank you, council, mayor, if y'all have any questions, that's, I just want to be available for questions as we move forward, I know it's some change in the way we do things, so, I know that you might have some questions from some of your citizens in your area, so, I just want to be available.
We, we had a town hall meeting Tuesday night, and Ms.-
Nobody said anything.
Nobody said anything at all, and Mr. Frost, who hosted the meeting, asked the question, and we had probably forty people roughly in there, how many recycled, and I saw very few hands that didn't go up, now, when asked if they had the big container or the little one, pretty much, I think, myself and a couple other people had the big container, I still got mine, by the way.
You can.
It hadn't disappeared.
Good.
Yeah, okay.
Not two of them.
Uh, but anyway, I think we need to keep getting the information out there, and, you know, personally, the way things are looking right now, I think it's a, it's a good program for the community, so, we'll keep, uh, we'll keep our eyes and ears open, okay, Mr. Richard, and then-
Since your last appearance before the council, what have you, have you heard from citizens?
I have not had, I've had one negative email, and they just said, I don't like it, and, and at the bottom, they said, I don't like the big cart, and then I answered that, and I said, well, you won't have to use it, and then, then the response was, oh, okay, well, I'm okay with it, um, most of the calls we receive in the office are, when do I get my cart? That seems to be the, the consensus, is just, when do I get it, because I'm excited about getting that.
Have you ordered them?
No, well, order them once you tell us to.
Another question.
Okay, go ahead, Rich.
Um, one of the things that came up, I, I was at the Coannis Club meeting this morning, making a presentation, and people were asking questions, this came up, actually, the first question, and, a little bit of a concern about going just to once a week, I told them what you had shared with us, about how the trash dropped off by more than fifty percent in the second pickup in most neighborhoods, but the question was, okay, but if I'm a really trashy person, and I need more, can I get a second tub? Should I call for bulky item pickup? What's our solution if someone has routinely more than one trash can full?
We, we don't want to offer multiple cans at the initial, uh, launch, because we want to get those carts out, and then we'll have a, a period where people can order if they'd like to, and we'll probably maybe establish some small fee if somebody needed a second one, um, and in the meantime, we'll have a large roll-off available at the compost, we're also looking at some other options to make it available, so that if a person just had some trash, and need to get rid of it, there was options for them, but there will certainly be something at the compost site, the new compost site.
Okay, well, tell me if I said the wrong thing, because what I told them was, you can take the two big canisters down there, and if you have more trash, just have it in a black, plastic bag like we do now, and the guy'll have to hop off the back and throw it in the back, correct?
Yes, sir, yes, if they have a hundred bags, set it at the curb, and we'll take care of it, nothing will change about the amount of trash.
Well, that's a really trashy person, they got that many.
Yeah, we get it.
Who are you hanging out with, bud?
We get it.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody waits their yard, and there can be a lot of bags, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll come back, I had, Mr. Allen.
Mr. Archer, if a person does not want the large tub, and they want to continue with the, as they're doing now, how do they notify you that they do not want the large ninety-gallon tub?
Well, we're, we're kind of planning that part out, but there will be some method for them to notify us before delivery, and so that the delivery company will know not to deliver there.
Okay.
If, if for some reason the cart ends up at someone's home, there'll be a number they can call, and we'll go collect that backup.
All right, something we mentioned several times before, if, if my pickup day's Monday, or my pickup day's Friday, and I've got a long weekend, I'm out of town on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, have we worked up, besides going to the, uh, have we, or, do we have any kind of process in work where I could get mine picked up on a day that's not my day, or how, how do we, if I miss my Monday, and, and my wife doesn't want two weeks of that smelly stuff out there in the tub?
Well, that's one of the things that, you know, me and you have talked about, some options, and, right now, we have established that will definitely happen, is the roll-off at the, at the compost, but we are looking at some options, um, of course, we'd like to, like to keep everybody on schedule, if we can.
That's right, I understand, we don't want to take advantage of it.
If we get off schedule, then it gets costly for us to, to-
Yeah, no, we don't want them to take advantage of it, and just start calling every day, and saying, you missed me, now come get it, but the compost site, if you're driving from a north side of Longview, is, is a pretty good distance, you know, but anyway, those But anyway, those are the two, the biggest concern, I think, I've, that the people express to me is, if they miss their day, what do they do? And, and that's, that's, I mean, we haven't answered that yet, but I think that's the biggest concern I've run into.
And, and normally, it will be just like it is now, you call us and we'll get it taken care of. I mean, we, we are about serving our customers. So if we know there's an issue with someone, we're gonna figure out a way to take care of it.
Mr. Gary? Mr. Archer, I'm still confused about the bulk pickup.
Yes, sir.
Is it gonna be picked up the same day at the recycling and sanitation that we picked up?
The idea about simplifying is this, is your trash day, your recycling day, and your bulky item day are all gonna be the same days.
Do I have to like call that in or take a picture?
Right now, we would like to continue with the call-in. We are working on a system. One of the, one of the issues that we have is we have three trucks. And so if we drove the route, we could do it with three trucks. But the problem is, we pick up junk, which ends up at the landfill. We also pick up limbs that end up in the compost site. So one of the issues that we have to kind of work through is how to logistically do that, where we're actually just routing, and so checking the street to see what's available. The initial plan is that this would be, we would be, we'd have a list of those that have been identified. We would also have the calls of those, some, some customers. But the idea would be to come out of an area and it would be completely cleaned out, and even, even without a customer having to call us. So, we're working on that, because that's what we, that was the plan all along. But the volumes that we're seeing just kind of created a situation where we had to kind of move this direction, so. But we're working on that, we want, we want a solution.
Ms. Cash?
I was just gonna inquire about the bulky item pickup. I know we talked about maybe asking for, you know, were we gonna need more trucks? Or in order to really enhance that service? And, uh, uh, Mr. Smith already, I'm so, I'm so used to calling him by his first name. Mr. Smith already inquired about that as well. So I, you know, and calling in, because I really think, I'd like to see us move forward with making that service more productive.
And let me add this. In, in the budget this year, we have one vehicle that we're going to replace that's a dump body truck, and it'll be replaced with a bulky item truck. And it will be staged, well, it'll go to the front line. And one of the other units will go to a reserve state status at the compost. So if we end up with lots of calls and we need to adjust, we can put a driver in it and put them out there and put four trucks on the road.
Okay.
So, I think that'll help a lot with that.
Mr. Archer, we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Zoning, public hearing, item A to consider, application Z1307. Mr. Shirley?
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council, Mr. Willard.
How's the drums?